Okay, we're gonna start with the pledge of allegiance. And a motion for approval of the present agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, um, we're gonna start out with public comment. This is the first of two public comment periods. This first public comment period is intended for members of the public stakeholders of the district to speak regarding anything on today's agenda. There will be a second public comment at the end of the meeting that will be for any issues pertaining to Chatham Central Schools. So if a member of the public would like to speak, they can come sign in at the, uh, the sign in sheet there, or if you're, if you're online, you can raise your digital hand using the button at the bottom of the screen to be have public. We have one online. Okay, so I'll just give anyone in person or online just a moment here to indicate whether they'd like to speak and then I'm gonna move on. I think the battery might just be low. No digital hands, right? Okay, so, uh, I think it might just be low. Um, all right, we're gonna move on into our new teacher welcome. Dr. D'Angelo, do you wanna make some introductions?
Absolutely. Board of Education, it's my pleasure this evening to spend a few minutes introducing you to our new staff. I noticed none of them came up during public comment and made any complaints, so I'm, we're off to a good start already. What I'd like to do is first introduce them, and then if you have any questions, we can, you know, we can, so if you wouldn't mind standing once you're, you're announced. Starting at MED, we have Eric Roth, our art teacher. We have Brandon Kussler, our music teacher. Catherine Gom, who's gonna be AIS math or is AIS math, and joining us in, online, but I don't see that she's connected yet. We're welcoming back Stephanie Lineberry, a special education teacher at MED. Stephanie was with us for quite a few years and she's returning to us this year and we're like to welcome her back with, with open arms. So welcome to everyone at MED. At the middle school, we have one, uh, new teacher, our math teacher, Renew, but she likes to be called Ray Sherian, if I'm saying that correctly. And then at the high school, we've got Jordan McComb and our special education department. Seth Tillinghast, English teacher. Melissa Lawrence, who could not be with us tonight, she's our new E N L teacher here, and Catherine likes to be called Kate Rossi, who is a math teacher here. So, um, on behalf of, uh, the district, we are so happy that you decided to join us and we wish you well in your first year here. And I don't know if anyone, uh, would like to make any comments to our, our new staff.
I have one, one specific comment, which is really just, um, thank you for choosing our learning environment. To be here at Chatham, um, we're in a national teacher shortage, um, everyone's feeling it, but, um, you know, we're thankful for, for every new teacher that comes into our district right now, um, and, uh, look forward to, uh, to incorporating your value into, uh, into our district.
And I, I don't know if, um, our principals, assistants principals, I, I didn't recognize them tonight, but we have Justin from the high school and Mike from the school and Kristen, uh, our principal here at MED. So, um, I know you trying to make the teachers, new teachers feel comfortable in the district, get acclimated. They either already have mentors or peer support in place and we welcome them. We, as you've probably, um, remember from the interviews, we are, um, we are happy that you're here and we're willing to provide any resources you need to be successful. You just need to reach out, um, and we've got, uh, Brian Simon, who we're gonna be hearing from in a little bit, our director of PPS, all here to support them in their success here at Chatham. So, thank you for coming and, uh, the board meeting should only be about three, four hours, so you should be home in time for bed. Oh, Yankees game tonight, okay, um, so. So, so thank you very much and we'll look forward to seeing your smiling faces again in the morning. Oh, go ahead. They can go, yes.
Okay, uh, with that. Are we going to, going to board member comment? Uh, I actually have a question for our district. How are we doing on, um, teacher placements at this point? Are we full? Do we have open positions? In? Full instructional teachers?
With your appointments this evening. I don't think we have any vacancies, although I think we just recently, um, we have a maternity leave that went sooner than we expected, so I think we're working on that. But in terms of appointed teachers, we are, we're in good shape. Am I? Okay.
So that's temporary, isn't it?
Yes. Okay, so we have one at MED, um, and we have various, I, uh, teaching assistants and aides positions. We still have a few of them that, that ebbs and flows. Am I, anything else we, like, uh, like, anything at the middle school, you're, you're sure?
Yeah, so how are we doing overall on the paraprofessionals? Are we, is that like, that shortage is not abating?
No, I, um, can you give me some indication? I think we're down one or two. And then along those same lines, uh, we continue this week with our interviews of the assistant to fill the vacancy with, for the assistant principal, um, at MED. Part of my superintendent report, I might as well say it now, but right now we have John Roll sitting in as the teacher and special assignment, which you approved last board meeting, and that's working out tremendously. He's doing an awesome job, very well received by our parents and our staff and our students. So, we're really excited to give John that opportunity. He's doing a, uh, an awesome job.
So, um, seasonal operations aside, it sounds like maybe at this moment we are recovered from the labor shortage in, by and large, in instructional staff. What about, uh, we, we haven't talked about it in a while, so I'm assuming it's not an issue, but our, our, uh, our substitute pool was, was difficult for a while. Is that?
It's, uh, we're still not filling all substitute positions on a daily basis, so I, I wouldn't characterize it as being robust. Some days are better than others. Um, there's certainly more, uh, substitutes than we had during the height of the pandemic where several people were afraid to come in. But it's not, it hasn't totally resolved itself. Um, and remember, we did analyze the compensation last year and now we at least feel comfortable that we're competitive with our, um, you know, opponent or with the other, uh, comparable districts. So it's not necessarily compensationist, it's probably as much as scheduling and convenience. The other thing we did is, um, to try to use any strategy possible, um, and I'm smiling because Kristen was very generous. We ended up hiring an individual as a full-time building sub, a position that we weren't able to fill, um, I think last year or at least the last couple of years. And so we've hired an individual, um, but as it turned out, we have a situation here at the high school with a social studies teacher who, um, is out on medical for a short period of time. This individual has social studies experience, so he's actually gonna be doing some student teaching coincident to his substitute teaching, which makes this a very symbiotic relationship. Under some of the new certification, um, parameters, uh, he has all of his credentials. He did not have his student teaching. By us, um, working with him and giving him forty or forty-five, um, consecutive days in the social studies classroom, he'll be able to meet his requirement and push his certification forward. After he finishes that stint here at the high school, he will be a full-time building sub available to Kristen at, at MED. So, again, we're trying to use any leverage we can to bring bodies into the district who are qualified, um, and could benefit our students.
Okay, um, anyone else on board comment? All right, let's, let's, uh, move on into the special education update with Brian Simons.
Brian, if you'd give me a moment, I'll bring up your PowerPoint.
It's what I'm going to be covering, I think, a little bit of PowerPoint, yeah, but it's really a snapshot of the time of what we've been doing over the last year in special education.
Yeah, but I don't think, I'm not hearing.
As I was saying, I'm gonna give you your snapshot at times of the numbers, some of the work being done in special education over the last year. As always, if there's specific items you ever wanna hear about related to special education, let Dr. D'Angelo know, I'll put something together specific to what you would like to learn about, but it's kind of just a little bit of a piece of time.
I wanted also just mention that, uh, we, I know we have a, uh, request, um, from the board to do a comprehensive presentation on our PPS services. So school counseling, school social, uh, work and school psychologist. Brian and his team are working on that and, uh, we expect to provide that to the board in October. So, I just wanna make sure that the distinction between tonight's presentation, which is focused more on special education than it is on our PPS services.
And they are, have started working on that already as a team, we're, uh, putting that together at some meeting with her about that already, so that's underway. Okay, so some of the things that we've talked about and, uh, Lisa Ruins not here today, she does a lot of the five oh four, but there is an overlap. The questions come up periodically on what is CSC versus what is five oh four? So I thought I'd spend a little bit of time covering that because it does lead to some confusion sometimes. I don't believe I've gone over it before. Both five oh four plans and the IEP, so the Committee on Special Education, provide accommodations for students with disabilities. Only the IEP process through the CSC provides specialized instruction. That's when we started to talk about the work that our special education teachers do. I mean, in special education, we'll write the IEPs, that's part of the Individual Disability Education Act, uh, which has been around since nineteen seventy-five only, believe it or not. But it really guides all the boards that we've worked through for special education. It's been revised a couple of times now. Uh, and this includes or often includes special education service and related disabilities, or certain kids with IEPs might get accommodations like a student with a five oh four plan, but they might get, be in a co-tour classroom, they may be receiving resource room, direct special reading classes, uh, speech and language pathologist, OTP, and all that work may be on their plan. IEPs always have measurable goals that parents get reported on quarterly because they're getting this specialized instruction through our related service providers or a special education teacher. They are getting updates in addition to the student's report cards that they're getting from the building level. They also get quarterly updates from the Committee on Special Education. So, for example, a student has, is working in speech and language therapy on the TH sound. They will get quarterly updates on the kind of progress they're making towards the production of the TH sound speaking. And then the same kind of thing, program modifications and supports may go into place. We saw program modifications and supports. We are, oh, we saw that like maybe preferential seating in front of a room or near a teacher. They might be getting something along the line of checking for understanding, extra time to complete assignments, uh, those type of supports. Five oh four will have some of those. That falls under the section five oh four, Related Patient Act. My predecessor, Dr. Sheriff, who have been referred to this act as, uh, the law that grants on buildings. So it provides equal access to students with the disability. It ensures that people cannot be discriminated against because of their disability. It could include, uh, a variety of, thanks for talking about it, a lot of medical needs fall under here. You can, like, talk about a child with cystic fibrosis, uh, or ADHD could fall under this. Also are probably our biggest increase in five oh four plans and Lisa Ruins, correct me if I'm not, but I can see there's often anxiety disorders. Due to, we have a big increase in anxiety disorders in children, so we have students who are being diagnosed with that, so they're making counseling supports to manage their anxiety at school. And all these supports are being done through general education. The general education teachers know for this child to succeed, I can do A, B, and C. And they're modified every year, just like the IEPs are. So just a brief overview with the difference between the two. So a couple of different pieces. Yes, their building level supports, teachers administer the supports for five oh four plans.
Yep, although sometimes they're supported by, by other staff, so.
Yes, they could be supported by other staff, but their building levels support people. They're not being pulled out to work with a special education teacher. It's a general education service.
A few things happening in special education.
So, yeah. See, uh, the parental force, the, the increased anxiety. Uh, are we looking at this systemically yet or are we dealing with this individual lives?
No, absolutely we are. Well, we talked about it in October, but, uh, our, you know, guidance team will be discussing some of that. We have to look at that very closely. And it's not a Chatham increase. I know of any of you who are reading, you know, uh, newspapers, seeing the media. It is the fastest increasing diagnosis for adults and children. General anxiety disorder. I saw one article not long ago that said something to the thirty percent range of adult diabetes.
Are we ultimately looking for trying to get a K-12 continuum of, um, services on this around anxiety?
Or probably not. I don't wanna go too far down that. I know each building level is working on a much of a continuum of improvement. Don't get us going too far down that line, but I will mention it to, uh, the IEPs so they can grow with their.
Okay, thanks.
So I guess one of the things, so I'll go out of order on this. So staff update we're talking about, we, staffing is still difficult at times, uh, for us. We were so lucky to get Stephanie Lineberry back here when we had someone resign last minute, uh, she is a wonderful teacher, so. When you lose someone, to have someone who already knows us, knows our kids, who, you know, gave us come in and wanna come back to Chatham is a wonderful thing. But it is hard. Right now we are down for a school psychologist. We have a school psychologist that one maternity leave position. We've done two postings for it. The first posting, we only got two applicants. This is where I see the issues with some of the staff. There was a point in time that we did a posting, you know, maternity leave, school psychology position, we might've got twenty applicants, we got two. They were both pretty good applicants, but one eventually got hired for a full-time job. So she, after, you know, we thought we were gonna get her, she moved on and I contacted the other one back and that school psychologist didn't want to go over. Wanted to take a maternity leave and wanted to keep her focused fully on finding something full-time. We did a second posting and got zero applicants. You know, and, you know, as you know, last year was our first year for school psychologists in district and it's done very well with that. So we are covering just the three. One of, we have two in MED, one of those are spending part-time at the high school. And then we also have Tracy Kelly picking up some of the load also, some of the counseling, support services, or social work. But it's not even of those positions, you know, two postings, two full candidates. So there's challenges.
So this is, uh, we've been short for, uh, I guess since the beginning of the school year.
Since the beginning of this school year, that's gonna run till roughly our Thanksgiving break.
Yeah, so this isn't a very long time, but what's the programmatic impact there? Some of, some, I, I imagine the other, uh, the other, uh, psychologists can cover on some things easier than others, right?
Well, for certain things for crisis management, it's all hands on deck as always. So people who are in one building might need to hop over to another building, fortunate to live here at school, work on a small campus. Uh, so we can't get over to support. We have one of the school psychologists at the middle school, who is our smallest building, with the smallest caseload, also doing, taking, has taken on all of the preschool work. So usually they would share the preschool work, so we have one school psychologist, they, you know, manage all of that and also picking up some additional reevaluations. In general, so, you know, I've talked about the past, every three years, every child getting full assessments all over again. A low year for that, for some reason for us, we only have about forty total reevaluations, which is low for us for reevals. So there's not many to do, so some can wait till the school psychologists return and the other ones are, then our middle school school psychologists get a bit ahead on that. Some of the, all of the mandated counseling, so they have counseling on their IEP or five oh four plan, are all being seen regularly between the elementary school school psychologists, who was covering at the high school a few days a week, or by Tracy Kelly. A couple of the non-mandated kids, we have kids who just want, you know, to be counseling, they don't have a five oh four plan or an IEP. Some of those students said, no, I'm okay. I'll, I'll wait till Mrs. Seuss gets back. So we had, we have some of that, so there are a couple of kids with them, but we let them know, hey, if you need anything, something comes up, we're here, we're your go-to people. Tell a plan with those kids in case they were under some stress, but, uh, some have chose to wait, someone they know.
Prime, we, we also discussed, I don't know, we've taken advantage of this, compensating, uh, existing staff after hours or some report writing and some additional work, uh, things that can be offloaded, uh, outside the school.
Yeah, so if new referrals come in and we really start going, we do have the opportunity for, if they're doing worse. When you do the testing, it's older on the school day, but a lot of school psychology work where they're scoring of the evaluations and their report writing can take like after school. So if it rolls into that, we set up a plan for additional compensation for you.
And not, and we don't wanna burn them out, but it is a, it is a tool.
Yep. So, transportation, you know, I just have to mention how nice it is working with our transportation. Josh, he does a wonderful job. I, it's just I say I, but the special education department puts a lot of stress on transportation department at times. Right now they're transferring our students who are not here, go to specialized programs, either Quest or three programs, or private schools to eight different locations. When our students who are not here, they're not here, it was deemed that we do not have appropriate educational services for them. So some of these students present with both unique learning and social emotional behavioral needs. When you see our drivers and when you see our attendance, transport, always give them a big thank you. They are doing a fabulous job. We've had some tough, I mean, their number one job is transport, they can save money. But there's times when they have to deal with some challenging behaviors on the bus. Sometimes Josh has to send me the video recordings of some of the behaviors taking place on the bus. And the calmness, the patience that they handle it with, the way they look for feedback, the way they're always trying to improve their skill sets, working with students. I could not be more impressed with what's happening in transportation. So I really didn't wanna go through this. It's, uh, it's not always easy, uh, but they are doing a wonderful job.
Yep.
Do they have support on the bus?
Yeah, they all have, they'll be, you know, they do have support. You know, there's a driver that's always an attendant on the bus, so we always have at least two adults on these buses. There might be three or four kids on the bus, you know, so it's not always a loss. It's just like two kids on the bus with a driver and attendant. But it's still not the same level, like, and I, I do ten hour, thirty hours, so I do some evening training. So school psychologist, Caitlin Frye has done training for them, so they get a lot of training also on how to manage, uh, and support students with special needs on the bus. But it's still the two of them on the bus. They can call in for a radio. If a teacher is having a difficult time with a student in the classroom, they can call me, they can call the principal, the assistant principal, the school psychologist, there's lots of people come running to help. They don't get that, you know, it just goes to the picture of where they are. Now, so. But I guess one of the things that I'm most, so I haven't been so excited about our initiative in a long time is our Ori Gillingham training. We have eight teachers who, six of them are special education teachers, go for Ori Gillingham training, some are thirty hours. I met with them on this past Monday, yesterday, uh, school, where they, they are so excited about what they're learning. For those of you who aren't familiar with Ori Gillingham, it's one of the most research-based programs for students with dyslexia and reading disabilities. And they are taking it head-on, they've got their benchmark assessments for the students done, they're implementing their lessons for it. Uh, they're gonna be sending me all the data, I'm gonna be closely tracking the data and like following, monitoring the progress for them. But it, you know, and you'll see in some of the other slides, you know, there, there's a lot of work that needs to be done on literacy for our students with disabilities, uh, and this is a wonderful initiative. I'm just glad that so many teachers have wanted to take on this training and that they're embracing it. Some teachers told me who are, could be the co-tour teaching group, that they're bringing some of the strategies that they learned from Ori Gillingham to the co-tour, to also work with the general education students, and they find that the students are, it's clicking quickly for lessons. They're, they're really finding the strategies used and what they learn, the students are grasping rapidly. And put the Ori Gillingham training in with the work that's being done with C T L A in the building, it's at ninety-five percent. I think we have, we're making a lot of moves this year on literacy for the kids and I am extremely excited to see where it goes. And I'm super excited to see how excited the teachers are, you know, but, yes, you know, as you know, it's been a tough few years. So to see the kind of enthusiasm and excitement that teachers had to be implementing some of this was extremely, extremely exciting. And I'll be report back on some of the progress the students have been making with this later in the year for you too.
Brian, I, uh, I recall this is an extraordinarily, um, expensive training and we were able to, to provide this through some grant funding.
HR was able to put together the grant funding and everyone was able to go.
And we also, uh, because of most of the training took place this summer, we're able to also compensate, uh, teachers for attendance in the training. And, you know, shout out to Kate who was working daily on finding us, uh, grant opportunities to pay for some of these wonderful programs, so.
And it's not expensive.
How many teachers were able to participate?
Eight teachers, actually, I think seven to the thirty hours. We actually have one teacher, one of our A I S teachers, who received the fourteen month full certificate training. The practicum's involved in that too, it's, it's very, very involved.
And I don't know if this is a fair statement or not, but I think the momentum that's generated through the excitement of these A I will be somewhat infectious and may provide others to be motivated to continue in the future as well.
It may, and, you know, also keep in mind Ori Gillingham is a finance-based reading instruction program really for our youngest students. It may not be appropriate for high school teachers, uh, but the majority of our elementary school special education teachers have gone through it. Nope, it's different.
Is this something we project we would want to do year to year or?
Well, it's, one of the reasons that I'm asking for so much data from them, they got their benchmark, they're gonna be sending me the regular data, but they're also gonna be sending me the data, the amount of minutes the students are receiving of Ori Gillingham. Uh, there's gonna be a little variability in that, at the grade level that the students are on. But also there are other reading assessments that they provide, the I R E D, and other, so I'm gonna be looking at, trying to look at how the Ori Gillingham time and the data on that correlates to the other reading assessments in other areas that children are receiving, to really look at the benefit that the program, I'm optimistic for it, but I wanna get some objective data on it. And, uh, if the data is promising, you know, I would like to get some ongoing training for them, also get some additional coaching for them. Give them the words that they need, uh, to get to implement it well. You know, cause any pro, you know, no program is worth a dime without the ability, you know, it's, so we have to keep an eye on that piece too. So you talk about sometimes COVID impact, I, you know, and I was putting together some numbers for you. This is, I think, we jumped out eight more than anything else. These are the number of referrals that we have to the Committee on Special Education over the last four years. The eighteen, nineteen, nineteen, twenty years, pretty consistent. Preschool's always a little over the place, you never know what you're gonna get. So I'm more really interested in the school age model, CSC funds. We had massive jumps from eighteen, nineteen, twelve, new initial referrals of community education up to twenty, nineteen, twenty, twenty-eight. New issue referrals of community special education up to twenty, nineteen, twenty, twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-one and thirty-six. New referrals, our number of referrals from both teachers and parents who are worried about their kids to the committee on special education skyrocket.
Are you getting a lot of, um, are we, are we talking about teachers making these identifications or requests from parents?
So they're coming from both, I did separate that on here, but we are getting mixed both, so some of these are going through the traditional. Refer to the building level child study team, doing response to intervention, collecting data, and students do come to here. Other ones are directly from a parent saying, I'm really worried, I'd like to test my child. And then there's a few that we've had some increases to young kids with speech and language needs. Which also might be related to them being home, not communicating, so some of that, both speech and language mythologists will be screening, then they come to me and say. I, I would like to do some additional testing, contact the parents. But we have the capacity to. Oh yeah, we do, keep some busy. So this is some of the patterns you see, now we, for a while we were going down our toll, these include preschool and. School aged children with disabilities over the last number of years, we were going down for a bit and now we've kind of the last three years kind of plateaued out. At the same numbers, you look at uh this year, maybe this year, they're taking like from September first numbers. Each of these years, uh, they do fluctuate throughout the year, uh, out of those a hundred and seventy-five, fifteen of those are preschoolers. So we have kind of leveled out the number of students with disabilities, we have. It is not the same from grade level to grade level, we have some grade levels with sis and six kids, other kids with grade levels of twenty. So we have some variability here, so that's always interesting to be hands on that. So for example, at the elementary school, we have both third and fifth grade, two special education teachers working those grade levels. Meet the needs at that grade level, uh, but when you look at these numbers, it does represent an increase in our overall. Number of students percentage wise with disabilities, so as you all know, we have an increasing enrollment. So you know the enrollment's decreasing, the numbers of students with disabilities.
What is our current percentage?
I haven't looked at it yet.
I think we got a, an enrollment report. Not, yeah, not too long ago.
But in terms of percentage of students with disabilities, we're probably looking at like eighteen, but to guess nineteen.
But I mean, this makes sense clearly, um. You know, it's much easier for a child without disabilities to uh school at home.
Yep, yeah, so it's not surprising, and when I talk to my colleagues in other districts at the Quest or meetings that I attend them. It's pretty consistent, it's being seen other districts too, it's not an isolated chat.
Yeah, we all part with like poses in the same.
Yes, well, last time I looked at it, we were like, well, we were like one percentage higher, but yeah. So just, you know, the, with the kind of the needs we're looking at, I kind of put this together for you every year, the largest majority of our students with I E Ps. Are students with learning disabilities, this is dyslexia, dysgraphia, dyskavia, you know, it's the most common, most of them. Dyslexia is most common, there are some, some overlap with the math and right. Red flags come up in kindergarten screening, they may start getting A I S, but the majority of our students are identified with learning needs. I'd say in elementary school by third grade. But there are some, you know, there is this response to intervention piece where we're trying to work with them, we're seeing is it? How we're teaching or is it actual learning? So we don't wanna jump into a disability if it's not one, but uh, so we monitor closely and they get pre classification interventions and services prior.
Last time I asked about this, which. I'm not sure if it was pre-COVID, but maybe it was last year, we had no mobility sight or hearing.
Still.
Instances, still zero there?
Right now, yeah, you know, we have eighteen students with autism, the other half of the impairments are usually students, the majority of those are students with. Uh, A D H D or anxiety disorders, which is level of the, it's rise above a five or four, they need specialized instruction. So the level of anxiety, I talked about that difference, those four or five or four, the student's level of anxiety might be so severe. That it's having substantial impact on the, really the past tests, the sitting class, they need some additional school construction to get caught up. With the special education teacher. Nope, these are not included. And they don't have the different classifications, so you look, you know, for those of you familiar with psychology, there's the E S M diagnosis typical manual. That has hundreds of diagnoses that people may have. When you're looking about the Visual Disability Education Act and writing, C S C and I E Ps, there's thirteen classifications. And so no matter what disability a child may have that may lead to having an I P, it falls under one of thirteen categories.
Do we have a number at the five oh fours?
I did not get that number together, but I can uh mention and talk to Lisa, I can actually probably pull it up pretty quickly on my computer. It's not as many as C S C, we have more uh given values than five oh fours substantially, where it's probably about a third of the number of five oh fours.
It would interest me to see from year to year.
And that's something I can put together for you, I think. You know, as I said, preschool varies from time to time, and here's by placement, you know, Chatham High School has forty-two students with I E Ps, fifty at the middle school, fifty-nine. And then I would say we have students who we do not have an appropriate setting for them here, it's our Quest store, Quest or our private day, our residential. And parentally placed in district, so I'll explain some of these to you, so our residential students are to. Uh, our students where we pay because of the beds that they're at the residential. We pay for the educational component, New York State pays for the. We pay for education, New York State pays for the residential, uh, there is a program where we're able to work that out for those students. West Star program and private day, sometimes we talk about conversations, we always talk every year about our children able to come back. But we also have conversations about, do we have, can we create a program in-house to bring these kids back, we have our continued services here. But some of the issues in a small district we have with that is age range, special education classrooms, you cannot have greater than three year age range. For the students, so we might have one student with the need, you know, who is six and another student we have with similar need is. You know, fourteen years old, we can't put them in the same classroom, so that's also leads to why we don't create some of the classrooms in-house for the students. Students who are parentally placed in a private school in district, even if their home. District is out of Chatham, we are responsible for those I Ps. So, and this has been quite some, but it's not a big demand on Chatham, there's only two private schools within Chatham School District bounds. One of them. Does not wanna receive any services through, you know, through their religious beliefs and the other one is Columbia Christian Academy, so say a student from. Catskill, Hudson, Pecanic, place their children at. Parentally placed at Columbia Christian and they have I E Ps, we become responsible for managing, uh, keeping our services for the students. Any district, if you're comparing to live anywhere, if they send their child to Columbia Christian, they have an I E P, it's our responsibility. Yes, or if Columbia Christian reaches out to us with a parent, I'd say we wanna do a referral, it's up to us to do the testing, C S C testing.
I, I think that math works in our favor and I'm, and I'm sure you wouldn't wanna be interfacing with, you know, like. Five or ten, you know, different schools for that kind of thing.
This tricks like. You know, private schools, broken, so the different schools, they, they actually have to hire additional staff to manage it. Preschool varies greatly, preschool services, every child's unique. We have preschool students who are in full day special education preschools. Uh, we've worked with a few of them, not many, a small percentage usually at the starting place, which is the co-op program or the story places, the two. Hopefully here, uh, but advanced therapy runs some programs at a think about, and there's early childhood education center up in Troy, we've had some students go to. There is a shortage of people providing services. Every, yes, ev, yeah, but some of them, most of those are home services. So the child might just need speech services or just might need some O T services. And so a speech therapist might go into the home twice a week, provide speech in the families living on that kind of thing. And that's the majority of our preschoolers, but there are some with higher needs, uh, that do need full day special education programs. The I E Ps, so we're responsible in any public school from age three to age twenty-one for special education services for students. For the three and four year olds, the funding is a little different, so we are responsible for doing the value. Do the evaluations and it is fully funded by the county and work closely with the county representative. At Glutton, all of our meetings, funds, services. Uh, we will find the providers, but when a parent refers their preschooler, one of the things of the referral form that they received. Is who do you want to give the evaluation? A number of years ago, maybe fifteen, roughly or so, now it could be going quite a few years, Chatham became an approved preschool evaluation site. So the parents who refer their child get on the list of. Buyers, are you able to, you know, don't pick who they want to do it, our Chatham family is ninety-five percent of the time to pick us. Uh, occasionally the family doesn't. Uh, but it's a wonderful thing, they get to be our school psychologist early, uh, attending meetings with us, sometimes we're gonna be working with these families for. Sixteen, seventeen years and starts a relationship early, so most of the evaluations is a wonderful piece to. So like I said, the majority of time it chooses us to give the evaluation, but it's like that, we bring the I E P, we give the evaluations, we hold the C S C meetings. But it's fully funded by Columbia County. And transportation is also provided by Columbia County. So outplace students, we were going down pretty sharply there for a while, and we had another jump this year, someone else, so these are the students in those different places. Our Quest Star and private school placements, uh, so we were going down, had a little bit of a leap. That leap comes from a few students who be struggling here in district, that recommendations were made for them to go out. We work closely with the parents, they visit the school when the takes are done, and we didn't have any fun teaching, you know, uh, graduating. For this school. And those are the thirteen students there I spoke about, uh, for the transportation department, make different programs, so say those. Thirteen students go to eight different locations. So they vary, they vary in age, greatly elementary to over eighteen. The twenty, you know, there's really twenty seven, twenty-one students this year, so a few of students are teaching out. Possibly we have a little decrease in special education, so we have seventeen students, uh. Hoping to graduate this school year, that we're anticipating graduation at the end of the school year with uh I E Ps. And we have three request our private school placements who be graduating. So you know, we have twenty, now we are looking at a potential decrease next year of twenty students, uh, but. Target, who is looking into district, who's looking out of district, how many new referrals we get this year, how many are found eligible. So it's, it's, that's always something. So I don't know. But it sounds like, you know, you would say. Anything growing in general relative to the general population of the school. I don't wanna go too far down that rabbit hole because I live it every day and, you know, if I'm at work all day long and I get a call. From a bunch of phone calls and psychologists and social workers all calling about the concerns they have, to me it feels that way, but without really looking at the numbers, I, I. I wouldn't wanna go too far and say yes, but.
Chris, the ideal is there.
I dug into these numbers really deeply because I watched these enrollment numbers and the models we've done, um, these numbers tend to track with, um. Population and demography of our district, right? Um, the, what we've seen in, in recent years is that our enrollment numbers for non-special education students that do not require services. Do not track with our demography, we've seen a disconnect from that. So the children that do not need services are sometimes ending up at homeschool, sometimes ending up in parochial schools. Um, but, but those children typically generalize, do not require the same level of services, um, overall. So I, I, I wouldn't say that, you know, that these increases we're seeing, right? Are not necessarily increasing on the basis of the population in our, the residents of our district.
It's awesome, I mean, it's hard to tell at this point because if it is COVID impact. How much is reaction, how much of response, without four, five or six years, your trend data is not really. You know, combined with, you know, or an average thing, the state average is like thirteen, fourteen percent.
Oh, no.
Up right now.
There was a point in time, twenty years ago, where districts were hitting eleven, twelve percent special education rate, so it was like, oh my goodness. Oh, now you see, like seventeen.
So we'll see if that declines over time too, it's possible.
It is possible, uh, you know, but there's always gonna be students. Now, there's always going to be students where it's several, well, there's always gonna be students with dyslexia, they're always going to be. You know, that's why we are there, it's never gonna be a fun time where you're not coming to special. And some of them are short term services, you know, you have a child with speech and language therapy who starts in kindergarten, by third they might pay that, we declassify students too.
Yeah, what, how, what do you think is our ballpark, our declassification rate?
Oh, it's not high, it's probably three or four kids a year. Uh, there's a few every year.
A- anyone else have questions for Brian before we see him again in uh two months?
Oh, next month, I'll be back with the guidance. Some of the uh social emotional supports that we're giving kids, uh, part of that too. Uh, and then also put together some of those five or four numbers.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
All right, and as I said, this is kind of, I kind of put together, I think you might wanna hear, but thank.
No, this, you know, other than some random questions, I think that this is a really good overview. Okay, we are gonna move on into our student representative report with Gracie Gable, um. With, with one request, which is I'd like to hear a short story about that Spirit Week scoreboard out in the hallway.
Okay, so the Spirit Week scoreboard is a little bit of a sore subject for me right now. As the seniors are not winning, so I'm a little upset about that currently, but that was Fisher's idea. Um, in order to hopefully get a little bit more involvement, uh, that's my first report actually, is at Spirit Week currently. So we have a class competition happening, yesterday was PJ Day, today was color wars, um, seniors were green and. Juniors were pink, sophomores were blue and freshmen were purple, I don't know whether it's a freshman as well, and we did have to go shopping for. And then tomorrow is country versus country club, which is the day I am the most excited for. And then Thursday is like a seventies theme, and Friday is a Thursday, Friday. Friday is a busy day, that is not only the football game, but we have a club fair happening. And then Friday, we also are having a pep rally. Um, homecoming gates are this week and this weekend, so I know football is Friday at seven, girls soccer is gonna be Saturday at one. Girls volleyball is Saturday at two and boys soccer is at three, I'm unsure about girls tennis across country, I think girls tennis plays on Thursday. So we're really trying to work on involvement, there have been a couple of signs that we could have been, probably, and then I think it's. So something that we're discussing in this lot of, at very least, the senior class meeting, and I'm hoping this lot of the other things as well. In terms of the, like clubs being up and running, student government elections for applications were due on the nineteenth. Um, voting was completed. Um voting was completed on Monday, so we're just reading election um results. And then other ones that have begun, our Shake Year program have begun. I know a lot of students look forward to every year, um and Democrats have begun. The 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 show actually goes on uh early November. But I don't know how much your point against student government is up and running yet, they just have done their election. And then this Thursday, there is a parent.
Great, thank you, Gracie.
Modified boys soccer will beat Greenville, I think, for the first time tonight.
Oh, that happened, huh?
Six to one.
Oh, they killed it.
That would be why my phone's been buzzing like nonstop for the last twenty minutes.
I hear yours is pretty good, pretty good.
I haven't checked mine, but I did ask my little brother played modified soccer and so I did ask for it.
Well, that's exciting.
For your student um government, would you um please? Get a hold of Debbie and get her on the agenda if it's okay with Matt and bring the officers in to meet us, right?
Of course, yeah.
Oh, yeah, that'd be great. And we do that every year, right?
I know we did last year, because last year I was secretary.
Yeah, but it was, you know, we waited and waited.
Oh, yeah.
Right on, yeah, I'll get that on, um so not the first meeting, I think we can get that in. I cannot run against them on the board. I cannot be involved in government.
We are.
Yeah, I don't think this, I did run for class government, but no problem. Tonight, girls volleyball is in the gym right now. Yes, um they're in the gym. Um I passed the livestream up and I've been checking, they're in the second set right now and they won the first set. And they're currently, I think it's of sixteen. So those volleyball's happy tonight, thank you.
There is some excitement about that country versus.
Oh, I'm so brilliant idea. So country versus country clubs, like I am going country and I'm wearing cowboy boots. I I think I'm borrowing from cowboy hat, but like country club, I have a friend who's wearing a tennis shirt, like a matching sweater and it's gonna have all that. I know a couple of the of my friends on the golf team are excited about country club.
I think next board meeting, we should pick themes for the. Next board meeting is Halloween season, right? Uh that's a bad idea, let's let's move on. Chris, I was hoping that um in being sensitive to our, one of our guests tonight, uh our auditor, uh Amy Pedrick, that we could just um have her go next. Uh if I had picked up on that earlier, I would have put her much further up in the agenda or recommended that. So if you're okay with that, we could have Amy go next and then I'll do my report and then we'll have facilities.
I I I agree, that sounds good to me. Is everyone else in favor here?
Yes.
Then I don't think you have to change things around.
With that.
Well, Amy's getting situated, I'm gonna bring up um. Audit report in case she makes reference to any particular page number.
While you're bringing that up, I just, you know, from a one note here, um Beth officially serves on the audit committee. And um Beth, I'm gonna be handing the torch to you when it comes to the comptroller review, um whenever that comes back.
Yes.
But I but I stepped in and our consensus um at that moment was that uh we wanted to recommend this for adoption and we'll let uh Amy take it from here.
Thank you, everybody. Um so as Matt alluded to, we did the audit committee yesterday afternoon. Uh we had a two meeting where I made through the financial statements that all suddenly repaged. I'm only gonna hit a couple of highlights here today, but if there are any questions that any board members have, please feel free to ask me. So just a general background on what will be what I do as your auditor. Um we come in, we do some preliminary testing in a interim timeframe, usually May, June. We do some work on your controls, some risk assessment testing. And then we come back at three year end, um we get the information from Mike and Pat and the rest of the business office. And we do more testing, third party confirmations. Uh we do a lot of different procedures to get comfortable on the numbers that are included in the financial statement. The financial statements are those of management, we attach our opinions to them, but we do file them, it's just one piece of document. So for those of you that have been to the presentation before, the financial statements are pretty much set up the same that they always have been in the past. There was one new accounting change this year, the adoption of the LEAD standard. So um what actually got put into this inadvertently was uh when you do purchase assets through BOSI's, you get BOSI's aid on those assets, but in order to give BOSI's aid, BOSI's retains title of the equipment. So that makes it a right to use asset, you actually don't own it, so and that's the only change. It's not a significant change to the financial statement, but that's the only EFC going through the documents that are different for this year. So the first part of the financial statements, pages one through three, is our independent auditors report, that's our opinion on the financial statement themselves. This opinion format did change a little bit, um the first two paragraphs talk about the opinion and it said that our financial statements present fairly. So that's a clean unmodified opinion, the highest opinion we give as a professional, which Adam has received in the past. Then after that, we have management's discussion and analysis, that's pages four through fourteen. It's an attempt to have a brief synopsis to the reader of the financial, what happened at the district during the year. It gives management a chance to have some narrative impact on what caused some budget changes, what could affect the district going forward in the future. But one of the things to remember when you're looking at these ten pages, a lot of the numbers are presented not how the district operates. The financial statements are set into two different formats. One is a long term picture, which has all your long term assets and long term liabilities. One of the largest long term liabilities in any school district is their other post employment benefits. This is uh an estimate done by your actuary that's for your health and dental insurance and your property to current employees and retirees. It's a long term liability, it's a large liability that New York State doesn't allow you to fund. So because you have this liability, this long term liability, you will mathematically have a negative debt position. But each year, how you operate is you have your general fund and that general fund includes in its budget the premiums for the self indemnity. So you're paid, you go, you're always gonna pay those premiums, it's always gonna be funded in your general fund budget. Um so when you look at that pages four through fourteen, that large liability can make, can skew things a little bit and stand out and isn't necessarily how the district operates. Then those two sets of statements start on page fifteen, the long term ones are fifteen and sixteen and then seventeen and nineteen are fund based. But fund based is really how your district operates, you have your general fund, which accounts for most of your activity in the district, it's your voter group budget. You have school lunch fund, your library, your special education, special aid fund, which has special education. It also has your new federal COVID stabilization money stored there. Um so that's really how your district operates and how you kind of vote each day. Then after that, we have the footnotes, those go from pages twenty two to fifty. Those footnotes, other than the new, the explanation of the new LEAD standard, they are unchanged from last year. The footnotes give some more description to what each fund is, especially what the special aid fund is, what the general fund is. And it also gives more description to you, you have a fund balance, you have reserves, the fund balance here, state has that reserves that you can fund. Um those reserves are explained in the footnotes as well. Then after the footnotes, we have supplemental information, this is information that's required to be there by the governmental accounting standards board as well as. First state education department. The reports here are preparing your general fund budget to actuals. There's some other post employment benefits schedules in there, capital projects, schedules required, schedules that give more information to the readers. Then after that, we have the next part of the audit and that's the, what I call the single audit, it's the audit of your federal awards. So because Chatham spends more than seven hundred fifty thousand dollars of federal money each year, that federal money is your entitlement grants, your six eleven, six nineteen special education funds, it's your new COVID stabilization. And it's also your federal reimbursement for your school lunch and breakfast program. So all that is over seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, so we have to do what we call a single audit, a compliance audit with grants. Each year when we look at those grants, we will rotate what we test based on size, based on risk. The newest grants being your COVID nineteen, that makes it high risk for us to test. That's what we looked at this year, we had no findings, no significant deficiencies, no material. So all of those costs were allowable, everything we looked at was good, no issues there, so that's a clean opinion. And then we also issued an opinion on the internal controls over financial reporting and compliance. So we're not an internal auditor, we're not looking at all of your controls, but we do have to look at the ones specific to financial reporting. We had no findings here, but the um very good clean audit, everything, when we come here, everything's ready for us, we're not proposing any large material journal entries. Um so it's very good, clean audit and no findings. Then the last part of the audit is our audit of the extra classroom activity funds, these are the student clubs. New York State Education Department requires this audit to be done. Um in this audit, you do have a listing of all the clubs and you can see the activity. This year or twenty one, twenty two, the year that's was being audited, was more of a back to normal year a little bit, more fundraising had occurred as opposed to prior year when when we were still hybrid learning. And the one thing we don't have in the uh report this year is a management letter, management letters, when we do have them, they're not anything with a rise to a buying, to modify opinion, they're just items that to improve controls or efficiencies, but we had nothing to report. Um every audit, but very, very slowly, everything's great, I wanna, you know, they help with a great job, my, uh and the rest of the office is up.
I would just like to follow up on that one. Um I've gone on it three years in a row, um I don't remember having, not having a recommendation from our CPAs. So um that, I think that's, you know, you know, on a budget as complex as this one is, is really notable that uh we're doing a top job there. Thank you, Mike. I also want to add, and you know, this is, I I think probably every school has this issue of um, there is a note in here about um, as we've had every year, um the extracurriculars, um you know, we're we're essentially capturing cash in cash boxes, right? And uh you know, I I I brought it up a couple of years in a row, but it'd be really great if we could figure out how to do. If we if we could figure out how to support the clubs with electronic payment receipts. Um because I think that they probably cannot effectively do that on their own in a way that would satisfy accounting requirements, but people do not walk around with cash anymore. Increasingly, people have no cash on them and when you're trying, when you're a student trying to hit some of your funds, cash in pocket is important. Um so just a note there, but but as as it's it's not simple. There's limits to how much support we're supposed to give clubs um and uh the typical uh like small merchant systems that that people walk around with to sell stuff on the street, it's not suitable in this case, so. Um it may be some years yet, but.
Well, I was just gonna say, I think it's going in that direction.
Uh and lots of countries have out, have banned cash completely, so I I think it's a good idea to look into.
If we do here in Chatham and I have never, ever, if they know they're coming to an event, they have cash, they for a check, they can make out a check to the school district. So as far as getting, sitting with cell phones or electronics to take a five dollar ticket at a at a musical, I don't agree with that. But it's just aerial talk.
Okay.
Okay. And I am a little bit older, but I know. But still, um that's my opinion.
It just, they carry their parts, you know, that type of thing.
Mine are the same. Mine are the same.
Um is anyone have a questions on 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 today's audit presentation? Um it's uh seventy pages here, clearly we're not gonna go through it in detail, but if you have a specific item you wanna uh ask a question about, there's a lot of specialized terminology in these these reports, um we've got experts in the room. Okay, well, with that, I'm gonna ask for a motion then. Our our fifteen, I have to read it first, our fifteen, be it resolved with the Board of Education, accept the independent audit report for the year that ended June thirty twenty twenty two, uh submitted by Weston Company. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you, Amy.
Yeah, I just wanted, I wanted also to go on record to thank Amy, Mike, Pat, the entire business office um for their work on this. And and Dave LeBeau, our community member, who were sitting on the audit committee and asking some very insightful questions and pushing us. And also Kate Gerard, who's helping with compliance and uh with grants, so I think it's a, it's a great team. And I thought when my daughter didn't carry cash, that was a strategy, but.
Yeah, it's it's um, it is not entirely a generational thing, there are parts of our planet that are dropping cash entirely. And parts, actually, our our country tends to lag here, we're cash heavy society compared to other places in the world, but there's people that don't walk around with cash anymore. Um, all right, we're into new business.
We're we're gonna go back up.
Oh, we're going back up, that's right. All right, so superintendent's report with Dr. D'Angelo.
Uh thank you, so while I was sitting here, maybe not country versus country club, but for those of you who are old enough to remember Donnie and Maria, I was thinking maybe country versus rock and roll. Anyway, um thank you very much, um we're, we continue to to ride on the momentum momentum of our our awesome opening. So my my thanks to all of our teachers and all of the different areas of support to the district. Um we're enjoying a nice start to the school year. We um, we've also had some meetings over the last couple of weeks, uh I hopefully don't take Chris's steam, but they're related to uh our architects meeting with our, um some of our content areas to delve a little bit deeper into some of the design considerations so that they can narrow down uh some of the scope items and prepare for a presentation to the board in October. And I'm sure you're gonna hear more about that, but uh thank, 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 thanking the teachers who've taken time out of their schedule to meet with our architects and um work with us to improve the facilities here from an instructional and educational standpoint. Uh as you heard, um homecoming this weekend, looking forward to um the weekend's events, um starting on Friday with with the football game. Um as I previously mentioned, we continue this week with the interviews for the assistant principal position at MED. I I will certainly up uh the update the board as more information becomes available on that process. Um I would like to congratulate all of our fall athletes across the board um for their enthusiastic return to kind of normal sports activities. Um we're having varying degrees of new success. Um and it's exciting to hear about our modified boys soccer, but also the girls took over Maple Hill yesterday in soccer. And that was an impressive win that has not been uh enjoyed in many years, so we're 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 seeing some success, success uh on the field. So shout out to all of them. Um as we enter October, we have a number of events going on, both sponsored by the PTA, uh PTO and um our schools. And I know I talked to Ms. Reno today, we'll also at MED have some upcoming information for parents on our Halloween celebration this year, which I know is always highly anticipated. I think that's my report for this evening. Well, I I I gave them the option because like there's a lot of work going into that report and I didn't want to put any additional pressure on them to try to do that on October eleventh. So it may very well be that they're both on the same night, so it may be a little bit longer of an evening. So um if they are ready sooner, we certainly can entertain that, but it appears now that they'll both be on the second evening. We are, correct? Trunk or treat is gonna be on the Saturday of holiday, of Halloween weekend, so Halloween is on a Monday, I believe. We can, I can make sure, I can confirm that. Load them up on sugar and send them home for the weekend. No, and and I didn't mean to take Kristen's steam, she's working on that, not all the details are finalized, so I don't want to prematurely share anything, so. But we are mindful that that's a, that's a community event that's enjoyed and um I I look forward to, I look forward to, forward to it myself, so.
You still got those horns, Sal?
Fucked away. Looking, looking for something new this year.
All right, uh I think we're into the facilities committee now, it's roundabout agenda. Chris?
Yeah, sure. So Sal touched on the, I would say, the bulk of the activity going on. Focus of the committee at the moment relates to the presentations coming up at the end of October to the board to present our recommendations for a capital project coming up for a vote next year. And to that end, our architects are closely working with the school to develop the ideas that have been discussed. We'll be presenting those in detail. So it'll be a very exciting meeting, I think, that you guys have been very patient, listening month to month without little incremental updates. So coming up in a month, we'll have a nice, substantial bit of information for you guys to digest. I think other than that, there's not really much else to report. You know, once, once we get through this, this focus, there will be other things that the committee will want to focus on. But clearly, at the moment, that's, that's our main focus. Fine, so. I, you know, what we don't know, I don't know if we've actually made the final decision on sign. I think we're waiting on one last component of it. But are we gonna be presenting that maybe the next meeting? Or what's our, I'm not sure what we're doing with that.
We certainly have an update for you at the next facilities committee meeting.
Sorry?
I said, we certainly have an update for you at the next facilities committee meeting.
Yeah.
You may want to then in turn bring that back in the October meeting.
So the school sign that we all know and love, would, would love to see replaced is that we're looking to do that coming up. And we have a very exciting, really cool, fresh, very up-to-date technology-wise sign that I, I expect everyone would, will get very excited to see. And I'll leave it at that. I don't want to give it away. But it does, it does illuminate, which is exciting. And not that up to date, not that up to date, and just not surfed. But. Well, let's see. So if, you know, if we, if we approve within a month, you know, we think probably by early next year, right? Yeah, springtime. Yeah, and, and that's part of the plan is we're not, you know, coming up with something that is not attainable, those guidelines.
Yes, it was, it was, so there's nothing wrong with the scoreboard, but we discovered, what Mike and Andy discovered is the controller stores multiple programs, and the wrong program was set. We learned something that there's, you need to select the right program that tells the system to display both on the controller and on the field side. And unfortunately, we didn't know that little idiosyncrasy. So we are planning to test it again this week, just to verify that fact and make sure that it's on in plenty of time for Friday's game. So. And it's, and, and we were a bit frustrated because it's a brand new, you know, the scoreboard's not more than a couple of years old. And we had already had one issue with the wireless receiver about a year ago, which was replaced. And so we had, we had feared that it was more complicated. But once we got into it, it was discovered that it was just a configuration setting. And, and now we'll have enough people that know about that going forward, that that should, at least that issue shouldn't repeat itself.
Sal, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't know, since the resolution of the generator, you know, since we passed that, have we, have we reported on that completion at a board meeting?
Not yet. I think.
Do we even have finals yet?
Yes, so there is one other tiny piece that the contractor wants to do during Columbus Day weekend. They, they, there's something that they're coordinating with, with NICE, an hour switchover of something that's in there temporarily. I did share with the board the close to final numbers on it. But once we have that take place, and they are scheduling it around practices and sports activities that day to make sure that there's no impact. But once we have that, we should get the final bill in. And in terms of, and, and this is a sure insurance claim at this point. And I don't believe you anticipate any issues with that in this. So not, so the answer, the long answer to the, the short answer to your long, but the short answer to the question is, no, we haven't done that yet. Thanks. You know, as obvious as that, as you saying that now is, I don't think anybody has brought that up for.
It's a good suggestion.
We should at least explore it.
Or a portable system, maybe, if we've got, we've got a lot of fields that don't have cover right now, right? I know for soccer, they have like a wheelie thing that they just.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's, let's explore it. Is it still permissible? Like, is that something that can be, can be obtained through fundraising as well? Like, I mean, the booster club purchase things, right? Right, so we can, let's see what kind of associated costs there are, and then we can.
Yeah, it'd be nice not to wait like a year and a half. Okay. We're gonna move on into new business. We have. And Deb, I'm sorry, I probably should have asked you to pull R sixteen off of here because I do not think we're gonna pass it tonight. But let's talk about it first. So as I did at a couple of previous meetings, I noted that the NISBA Congress is coming up. I can pull the dates, although it looks like the dates might perhaps be on this attachment.
I have it for you if you'd like.
I know that we're, okay, so the vote is on October seventeenth, right?
Yes.
And it's remote, but we are due to choose a delegate by October twelfth. We have a meeting the day before that, I believe. So we still have one more chance to designate a delegate. However, since nobody has raised their hand yet with interest in attending the virtual Congress, I am of the opinion that we leave digital space for districts that have an opinion on these matters. So I'm, I'm not inclined to move, although it hasn't happened while I've been on the board, I'm inclined to not send a delegate. However, the booklet's attached right here with the actual items that are being proposed. Some of these will pass, some of them will not pass. The ones that pass will become the NISBA position, which does impact policy in the state. So you guys can read these resolutions, and we will kick R sixteen into the next meeting. And if you guys feel passionate about one of these resolutions, just raise your hand and say you want to go to Congress. Yeah, we'll do, we'll do that motion instead. And last, someone wants to raise their hand right now and say, I'm very interested. Okay, so should I, should we read that motion instead, or should we?
So if you've done with number one is discussion, then we would move on to number two, which is a motion to delegate the voting, designate the voting delegate. So you would have to then entertain a motion to table that.
Okay, so can I have a motion to, to move R sixteen to designate a voting delegate for NISBA into the next business meeting? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. No pressure on reading those lengthy proposals from other districts. They, they tend to span from, of course, this should be our position to, are you kidding me? But. That's, if you read through it, that's what you're gonna find. Some of the things that are interesting there are the reasoning, the rationale are sometimes more interesting than the proposals. But. With that, we're into consensus agenda, R seventeen, be it resolved at the Board of Education, accept consensus agenda K through M as written. Can I have a motion? Questions or comments on any of these K through M items? Okay. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, and we're into items for future agenda.
I may have mentioned Ichabod Crane's facility director has been very gracious and invited us. Is there any board members interested in spending the time to go over and see some of their? Well, not yet. We're, we're working on it. I wanted to get a read.
I, I don't know if I'm available, but I would say schedule without me, and maybe I'll, maybe I'll come in.
We have five, five, maybe six. This is just to go to see the new facilities, some at Ichabod. And I'll reach out to the facilities director and we'll try to coordinate some, some times.
So while you're along the same lines, just to shout out, as you, as I previously mentioned in my report, we, we have our, we have our staff working with the architects. And Sandy Fisher, one of our, our science teacher leader, coordinated a visit for her and some of her colleagues over to Ichabod prior to their meeting with the architect this week. So they were informed about some of the new items that architects are including. So, you know, they, their own initiative, they reached out to their colleagues there, went over. I haven't had a chance that I see Sandy's connected. So I, I'm thinking maybe she's gonna help us know more about that. But they did that on their own initiative, and I'm sure because of that, we're all, we'll all benefit from that, so.
Okay, yeah, that, that sounds great. So let us know when it's gonna be, I guess. Yeah, no, that's fine. And. All right, so I think we just, we just have the second public comment. So this is the second of the two public comment periods. This one is open for Chatham Central School stakeholders to spend a minute or two to discuss any issues that affect the Chatham Central School District. So any members of the public would like to speak, they can come up to the podium. Or if they're digital, they can raise their digital hands. Do we still have a member of the public?
We have Sandy.
Okay, great. She's not driving today?
She's probably not in her car, thankfully. Sandy, I'm promoting you to. We can hear you.
There we go. Hi, y'all. Yes, I'm, I'm, I was in school. I saw a couple of the board members, and I, I snuck out before attending the meeting. So I don't know if Grace is still there because I can't see her. But the seniors are winning Spirit Week. Although the faculty, I have to say, we had a ninety-five percent showing in the Color Wars today, which was a great feat over our thirteen percent for the pajama day, which was yesterday. So Spirit Week is alive and strong at, at Chatham, and it's, it's a lot of fun. And it's, you know, it's so wonderful to see the students and, and staff participating. Matt, I just wanted to comment on your mentioning of, of possibly finding a way to use credit cards or debit cards as a way to pay for things at fundraisers. And I think that's brilliant because I'm in, I'm in the category of never having cash. And I know I would spend way more at fundraisers if I could just, you know, do a swipe of a credit card. So I, I love that, and I hope that we can explore that in the future. Sal, yes, stole my thunder. Yes, we did have a great visit yesterday at Ichabod Crane. Stacy Gazda at the middle school set it up for us, and we were able to tour the art, science, and the technology facilities, which are amazing. So if any board members are able to get over there, I think it's, it's really worth seeing. We got a lot of great ideas and some helpful tips as far as planning before our meetings with the, with the architects, which is today. And Sal, thank you. Thank you for including us in that communication because it's hugely important. And we, you know, we had a great discussion, and the architects, I think, are very conscious and very responsive to, you know, the needs of, of modern science and art and technology rooms. So I'm, I'm very appreciative of that. And I also wanted to mention that, I know I talked to Muriel earlier. The senior team, along with English twelve, Megan Connolly's class, is coordinating the mock interview event. And it's been on Facebook and on the school website. So if you've seen it, we're looking for volunteers to, to conduct mock interviews. So check out those posts on Facebook and the website, and the senior team will be in at the next board meeting to either answer any questions or make a plea for community help. We have had several community members reach out, which is very exciting. And so we're, we're very excited about this event.
I'll make sure that I include that in my Friday report to the board, the link to the survey and everything.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Sal.
Thank you, Sandy. Can you even hear me? Okay. Thanks, Sandy.
Thanks.
All right, I think unless there's another digital member of the public, I think that's it for our agenda. And there's no executive session tonight. So can I have a motion for adjournment? All in favor? Any opposed? All right.